I'd like to call the Adams County Cultural Council. Study session number four to order. Zoe, would you call the role, please?
When I call your name, please say here. Joyce Downing?
Here.
Aaron Vega?
Here.
Erica Hernandez? Emily Burr?
Here.
Jim Toll?
Here.
Larry Dunn?
Here.
Susan Beta?
Here.
Carrie Lang?
Here.
Thank you. That concludes roll.
Thank you. Next we have on our session, Dana, would you like to read your statement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is important to remember as an official council of the county doing SCFD business. These meetings are public and anything that we say today reflects the council, the county and SCFD. I would like to thank council members for their time and commitment to SCFD, the county, the arts, science and cultural community. And I was, and I would also like to thank any organizations or members of the public who are joining us today for their time and dedication. As we move into discussions, I ask that we contemplate the three core guidelines that SCFD believe are imperative to conducting welcoming, productive and professional meeting. Be respectful of people, of organizations, of opinions and of time. Be positive, assume best intentions of each other and of grantees. Be present, own your experiences, participate and engage. While this is a reminder to the council, it also states our values and expectations of this meeting. For any visitors that are with us today, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dana. I'll now read the statement for the process confirmation here. All council members should have their own flux portal open to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for and will be guided by the SCFD 2024 rubrics. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we'll call on any hands raised by council. Council members, please keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. There is not a scheduled break, but we will suggest one about halfway through the discussion list. And just a brief note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. All right, with that, we will go ahead and move into our first study session organization, which is the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Alliance. So I will, um, they, I believe have just one project they're requesting funding for. So with that, I'll open up the discussion.
Oh, I could kick this off, Joyce, if you're okay with it?
Please.
Um, Roses and Thorns. Everybody, welcome to week four. Um, I, I, I love this organization and what they do. I think it's really important, really important work. Um, I, I, I like how they're sort of addressed, they address sort of the overwhelming nature of conservation. I think that's fantastic, but I do, I, I do have a couple of questions and this came up if anybody's seen previous sessions this year, um, in this council about impact on SCFD and I want to get the council's thoughts on this. Um, again, incredible organization. I'm not seeing a lot of information. Um, I'd, I'd love more clarity, to use Larry's word from last week. Um, I'm seeing, I'm seeing one program in Adams out of maybe a hundred programs from their past attendance. Um, I love that they're expanding bilingual outreach. They're asking Adams County to fund a position. Um, I think that's fantastic. However, um, I'm not, I'm not seeing details on, you know, they want to develop and deliver environmental education in both Spanish and English to Adams County residents. But I'm not seeing what those are. Strengthen and grow partnerships with local schools, libraries, community organizations. That sounds great. Which ones? Um, I'd love more details. Um, so all in all, it's, it's hard for me to justify funding something hypothetical. It's, it, again, they do, it sounds like they do amazing work, but I'm not seeing any direct impact on Adams County based on this grant. Um, and I think the position is amazing, but they've got surplus of over eighty thousand last year. They're anticipating doubling their earned revenue, if I read that correctly. And I'm adding an extra hundred K in contributed revenue, which is amazing, but then they're asking us to fund a position. So this gets to the heart of, yeah, we know when we're dealing with a deficit like we are, what are we funding? Why are we funding it? And I'm just not seeing details here, but I'd love to hear others' thoughts.
Okay.
Erin, I also noticed that I wasn't, I wasn't seeing much in Adams County either. Um, so, yeah, I, I couldn't find that information either.
Anyone else?
Taking the positives, I might, they list three Adams County venues. Discovery Magnet School, the Bird Conservatory, the Thornton Arts and Councils. What, and then they say they're going to get five hundred to a thousand, which is, uh, I guess that brings up the question, what programs are they doing at these three venues? That are going to give us between five hundred and a thousand, as I interpreted, Adams County attendees. That to me needs clarification. What, how does, this isn't a program, this is a position. So what programs are you doing at these venues? That are going to bring in five hundred to a thousand Adams County residents who are going to benefit by this position? Um, it's just not clear to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, I also, um, to tell the truth, I was a little bit confused by the whole ask of twenty thousand dollars. Um, is that to be spent hiring a bilingual instructor in Adams County? Um, um, I was just, I was just confused by the whole ask, if you want to know the truth. Um, you know, exactly what they plan to do with what money?
Well, I, I do think they list the three programs they're talking about, Art of Conservation, Raptors in Focus and Signs of Wildlife. So the concern is we don't know exactly what's included in those things, but they, they did list which three English-only offerings they wanted to change into six to ten bilingual programs. I, um, would also just continue that I think that their financial responsibility is excellent. I mean, it's nice to see somebody have a pile of money that they're looking to, you know, steward. And they could have potentially asked for more money probably, so.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll move on then to the next organization, which is Chicano Humanities and Arts, which is CHOC. They are requesting, let's see, I believe, yes, two projects. So I will open up the discussion.
I liked their, uh, EDIA Board Handbook. Uh, I thought it was a great idea for them. In, you know, in the effort to answer the second part of the EDIA question. What is, you know, what is the organization doing? Uh, as far as hiring practices and business association practices. I think that that board handbook was, uh, was a big step. So I, I, I like that very much.
Okay. Good point.
I'll add something there. I did, I really enjoy reading their application. Um, I, I, you know, have some concern about them requesting seventy-eight percent of their upcoming fiscal year revenue from SCFD. Um, you know, really being mindful of diversifying their funding resources and thinking outside the box on different ways that they can, you know, build their, their, their organizational foundation, um, I, I think would be wise of this organization. Um, you know, I think beyond that, the programming that they're offering is really important and it's diverse and it, um, it fills a niche, right? In school, after school, summer camps. There's obviously a need for this kind of programming. I just want them to try to find a little bit more secure financial footing, rather than just relying solely on the SCFD.
Thank you. Anyone else?
To jump in there, I, I am surprised at that based, I was really, as I was reading through this, excited to see their diverse contributors and the fact that they were at sixteen point nine, almost seventeen percent SCFD funded last year. I mean, that seems really healthy to me. I mean, they had a good mix of, they have a good mix of foundational governmental individual support. Um, I think that's really, um, I think that's really fantastic. So I'm curious to see the spike. Um, would love to little, little information on that. Um, anytime I see a large other, um, there's five K in project one, there's five K listed in other for project revenue. I would have left a little clarity on that. Um, uh, but we've, we've had examples in the past and Dana's given us examples of, of what other could be, and just be nice to see a little explanation on that. Um, same thing for project two, although I will say project two, what I, I loved the, um, the activities will be offered for free, including free food vouchers for the first two hundred attendees. I thought that was pretty neat. Um, in terms of, you know, trying to, trying to draw folks in and make sure they get a diversified crowd and, and all of that. I think that was really great.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands, so we will move to our next organization, which is the Catamots. And they are requesting funding for two projects. So with that, I'll open up the discussion. I don't, I don't think I see any hands, but so I'll, I'll kind of jump, uh, jump in on this. I was kind of, I enjoyed reading this, um, this grant and I learned a little bit of, uh, about Westminster and, um, how it was named. And so I really enjoyed reading it and I love the idea of them kind of bringing in history along with the arts and, and that type of thing. So I, I was, I really enjoyed it. Um, and they are, let's see, I think if I read this, that they're, uh, the theme is centering around a hundred and fourteenth anniversary of the naming of Westminster. So, um, I think that was very interesting. Good job.
I appreciated, um, some of their hard numbers, their statistics. Um, they gave us re, um, numbers of what types of populations they serve with percentages, um, which I thought was really helpful. Um, especially when they do, when they go into their, um, EDIA piece. Um, so I found that really helpful to see exactly what that impact is and who they're impacting.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I thought it was really clever. I liked the program, the idea of bringing history alive, you know, I think when I think of that, I think of, you know, somebody dressing up like Susan B. Anthony and, I don't know, sitting on a front porch of a historic building. And this, this was taking it a, a lot deeper in the fact that they've been doing it over, not that there's anything wrong with dressing up like Susan B. Anthony and sitting on a porch. Sorry, let me clarify. But this felt, this, this felt, uh, I didn't want any historic reenactment folks to come at me. Um, but this felt really clever. Um, I liked, I, I liked that they were growing. I mean, they, they're adding on an education director. It's always nice to see, see an organization using funds and leveraging funds in that way so that they're more sustainable and you don't have as much burnout in the culture. I know when one person or two people do everything, it, it's, it's really tough. Just, just to be on my soapbox for one second, I am seeing another large, massive other category in revenue. Um, again, I, I'm, I'm assuming best intent, so I'm, I'm sure there's an answer there, but in the future for, for organizations, at least from, for my sake, I'd love to have a little clarity on what that other is, so it doesn't just feel like it's an amorphous blob. Um, and then for project two, yeah, I, I think it's a really clever way to engage kiddos, get them to write their own shows. I think that's fantastic. And obviously this is, this company does this with their com, with, with their core of professional folks. So it's cool to see them bringing that into the elementary schools. So, thanks.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Well, yeah, for whatever reason, I can't bring it up on, in my, uh, flux here, but um, once again, this is a great organization, was bringing another performance to my backyard. Uh, and I just have to say, it's, they've always provided wonderful performances. We have enjoyed it for the last three or four years. Uh, and they're coming to a part of Westminster and Adams County that sort of feels culturally ignored. So, thank you very much. And I'll, I'll say what, what, uh, uh, I can't think of his name, an old Colorado senator who gave us the lottery. It's a good organization, supported, but Bob Als House, thank you, Senator from Aurora, once per time.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands. Um, so I will go ahead then and move on to the next organization, which is Colorado Youth Symphony Orchestras. And I believe they are asking funding for two projects. So with that, I will open up the discussion.
I'll go, Joyce. Um, sure. Um, really appreciated the app. I thought it was nicely organized, easy to follow. Um, they're, they're doing some really important work and filling a void that's really needed, um, especially with regard to um, the, the other things that come with musical understanding and performance, right? Self-esteem and, um, discipline and, and teamwork and all of those things. So really appreciate all that they're offering, um, and the variety that they're offering to various levels of, of musical aptitude and interest. Um, so very much appreciated that. Um, would love to learn a little bit more about what other kinds of partnerships that they're doing. Um, you know, specific organizations that they're, they're liking to work with. Um, but I thought at least, you know, holistically from, from the application approach, I really appreciated what they're doing. Um, I might have some comments on project stuff, but I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I really appreciated the sliding scale tuition model. Oh, sorry, Larry.
Larry has his hand up, yeah.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll, I'll go after you.
Okay, thanks, Larry. I'm so sorry about that. Splitting focus between Zoom and the, the application, I apologize. Um, I really liked the sliding scale tuition model. I think it's, um, it's, it's an interesting one. I'm curious to see how that works out for folks. We're seeing it. Um, we're seeing slight, we're seeing sliding scale um, attendance and, or paid admission and things like that more and more. So I'm just kind of curious to see as, as that idea progresses, how it affects organizations' bottom lines, because I think it is a, it's a great tool to have funded paid admission, but you know, making sure you're trying to, you're staying as accessible as you can for folks that may not be able to afford a full price ticket. And I apologize, I'm getting over a pretty gnarly head cold, so I might, might cough here. Um, and then the projects, um, it does say that the students will receive instruction books and instruments at no cost. Um, knowing, you know, I think that technically counts as capital. I can't remember. I know we've talked about this before, so I just want to get clarity, uh, other people's thoughts on, um, and for the new, new folks on council, how, how we want to deal with that. Um, because we can, we can fund lots of things, but it's my understanding we cannot fund instruments being given to folks, um, the purchase of instruments. So, um, and then, uh, yes, uh, and then project two, about thirty percent of the students are coming from Adams County. I thought that was great. Um, that they're giving us numbers and data on that, so we know, we know, um, if that matches, if the need matches the, uh, the ask.
Thanks, Erin. Larry?
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, I, to echo Erin's point, uh, my issue was the, uh, was the free instruments and how we are going to approach that this year.
Right. Okay, and then, um, just to follow up as far as financial goes, I do believe that project two is over our cap, so I'm sure that'll be adjusted.
It was.
Thank you.
I have a question. It could be, I don't know where they get their instruments from, but they could be donated, instruments that they're giving, passing on to kids.
That's a good point, Susan, you know, and, and I'm thinking so for Larry and Erin's point, you know, we need more clarity, you know, maybe how they, you know, where the, the instruments are, are coming from, you know, who's providing the instruments? Are they donated and/or are they expecting to purchase them to give them away? So I think there's more, more clarity that's needed in the body of that, in the narrative.
I thought this was a very strong application overall, though I think they hit all points.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, oh, sorry, sorry, Jim.
I was gonna say, I'm just gonna give them the benefit of the doubt. I mean, they provide instruments to the students, but they never said that they were going to use our funding to purchase those instruments and I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. I, there is other funding coming in. There are other sources. They may be getting those instruments through, uh, CPRs donate a, an instrument, whatever. I, I don't know. Um, so I, I'm not particularly concerned by the fact that the kids in the program who are benefiting from this may or may not be getting instruments, uh, but there's nothing says to me straight up, we're going to use your funds to buy them instruments. It's not going to go that far from my understanding of cost of instruments these days.
Um, are they, this is a question for Dana, when they submit their final, um, the final study or, or report rather to SCFD, um, that's all outlined on there, right? And so SCFD goes in and just checks to make sure they weren't using it for, say, capital or, or something that's not qualified?
Right.
Great. Great. So there's checks and balances. That's great.
So in that, in that same narrative, they also uh, point to the fact that they have some virtual content that, uh, this, the students are available to, to receive on the website. So I'm wondering, does any of our funding actually point at the website that, you know, so they would be using our funds for it? I'm just wondering. Because we don't, if it's virtual, we don't fund anything like that, so.
I think at the end of the day, if this organization could just provide some clarity, knowing that we don't fund virtual or capital or any of those things, next year it would be great just to help take away some of these questions.
Great, yeah. Anybody else?
They do say it's an after-school program, so I, I guess maybe we can err on the side of whoever said it last, last organization, right? Like, then give them the benefit of the doubt, right? That they're doing the right thing.
Right. Thanks, Emily. Anyone else? All right. With that, we will move to our next organization, which is Colorado Bach Ensemble. And they are asking for funding for one project. So with that, I'll
Joyce, would you mind just a slight interruption? There's some chatter happening on the chat side about an organization that was potentially left out of the agenda. And can we, can we rectify that? It's a, it's a bit distracting, so.
Sorry. That. Sorry, Dana and I are now talking to each other. So it was an accident. It was an error on my part.
No, that's fine.
Colorado, or excuse me, Control Group Productions was left off the agenda, but it was on the SCF, SCFD website. So since the council did not have time to prepare for it, we will add them to May fifteenth.
Okay, grand. Thank you.
Yeah, my apologies about the chatter.
Oh, good. No, I just was, I was seeing it and I had worried about Control Group, because I, I'm, I'm ahead in my reading and so I just, I was going, oh, I wonder where we're, where this was supposed to be. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. My deep apologies.
It's okay.
Alrighty. So we'll move on to the next organization, which is the Colorado Bach Ensemble. So yeah, I'll open the discussion.
I can go ahead. Um, I appreciated the way that they went over their data collection. Um, I thought they did a nice thorough job of explaining that and I, I think it's, uh, really nice that they offer free concert series. I was struggling a bit to find previous, uh, engagement in Adams County. I'm not sure if anybody else struggled with that. Um, but I wasn't really finding, finding much, um, previous Adams County, uh, presence.
Hmm. Let's see here. And they detail the one in Adams at Parsons.
I think that's the only one I see, really.
Yeah.
Can I just, uh, make one small interruption, which is, um, this is a, a comment for the, the general counsel, which is, when you're looking at the grants, you're looking at upcoming. They're asking for funding in the year twenty twenty-six. So if you don't see anything in terms of what they've done in the county before, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to do something. They get funded for a project that they're predicting to do in twenty twenty-six. So I just want to be very clear that don't penalize an organization because they haven't been in the county before.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. Larry has his hand raised.
Uh, yeah, this, this
Uh, yeah, this, this, uh, is one of the groups that, that catches my interest. Uh, because of their highly specialized content. It makes, to my mind anyway, it makes it a little more difficult for them to have the kind of general EDIA program that other organizations, uh, can have, and, and, and I, I think it's because of the content, yet, I'm saying all this to say that, uh, despite their highly specialized content, they still may, they still have made good efforts to, uh, you know, not only to make their audiences, uh, more comfortable, you know, uh, engaging in more outreach. And, uh, um, just allowing these, you know, allowing audiences to come in and be familiar or become familiarized with this kind of music, um, and they're showing the same efforts uh, in their, uh, in their hiring and contracting practices. And I, I just want to, uh, compliment them on the kind of effort they, they put in, in spite of the fact that, you know, a lot of, a lot of, well, I won't say a lot. Some organizations may throw up their hands and say, well, you know, what can we do? But, uh, this organization made a real effort, and, uh, I'd like to compliment them on that.
Thanks, Larry. You know, and, and I, I'll just add a little bit, I, I really totally agree with what you're saying, in looking at the financials and some of the other areas, um, they definitely, even though they did have a deficit, they, they went and explained it, and they were planning on it, um, and they made some more efforts as far as looking for new funding. And, um, so I'm, I appreciate their efforts. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will move on the next organization to David Taylor. So with that, I believe, um, it's just one project that they're asking for. With that, I will open up the questions.
Yeah, I'll, uh, jump in here, Joyce.
Sure.
So, um, the, 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 the box for the mission statement, uh, um, it, it, if folks haven't joined us before, I'll say it again, um, it, it sets up how we view the rest of the application, and I would really like to encourage folks to just resist the temptation to put, to start their narrative in the mission statement box. It's a great narrative. But I'm having trouble figuring out what their mission is, it didn't match what they wrote, didn't match what I found online, I actually went to the website to try, to try to find it. You have a lot of, uh, organizations have a lot of room for the narrative, so I would really encourage them to keep the mission statement to their mission statement, um, so that's, that's my, that's a rose, but in terms of a thorn, I think it's, it's an incredible step, they're, they're going on, um, I know, bringing, uh, shifting the artistic director position and bringing on the new, you know, new people in the company, I know, you know, it's very difficult sometimes for organizations to move on from founders, not move on from founders, but to start to shift and sort of to, you know, bring in new voices, and I really want to compliment on that, I think, I think it's great, um, and this statement, the reorganization is designed to make the company much more efficient, viable, and professional, and a professional nonprofit organization, and I think they've been doing a great job based on what I'm reading, um, up till now, and I'm really excited about the future for this organization, and congrats to them, it's tough for organizations to move on. Under the project, it is, I couldn't see, Parsons Theater isn't listed in the venues, but it's stated in the narrative, am I reading that correctly? That, um, so again, I'm gonna assume best intent that Parsons Theater, Parsons Theater is where they intend to do it in Adams County, I'm just curious why that was left off, uh, um, left off the application. And it, it also feels like two projects to me, um. It, it feels like a performance and educational programming, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading that incorrectly, but, um, you know, it'd be great, we have, we offer two projects, so, um, if they, if they are different projects, or, or does the council feel that they're closely enough aligned with the performance that it sort of feels in the same world, I'd love to hear people's thoughts on that, um. And it says, and, and are they performing anywhere else, requested funds will be used to help cover venue rental and dancer competition for all performances. So is that multiple locations, is it multiple, so, uh, I'd love some clarity on that in the future, or if other council members read something that I missed.
No, you know, because I, I, I don't have my, my portal up right this minute, but I, I actually wrote down that they were, they had three venues, and, and I now like, and I didn't write it, you know, so I don't have my notes, you know, fully detailed. Um, so I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, their venues, oh, I'm sorry, Susan.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it does say here that it'll be, um, presented at Parsons Theater in the first sentence of the third paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just not listed under venue names, but their educational programming or venues, the venues for their educational programming are listed. Premier School of Dance, North Glenn Community Center, and Active Adult Center, so they've listed their education, but not their performance venue, so it's hard for me to understand. And they're saying anticipated attendees of six hundred, is that just for the education, is that just, again, it's, it's hard for me to put numbers on hypotheticals, that's all. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to echo your comments about the, um, the mission statement, and, I mean, it got a little esoteric for me, and I, um, yeah, like, just to really focus, I think, because i- i- in my opinion, it's good feedback for everyone who does these grants, that we're reading a hundred of them, so if you can be very clear about what you're actually doing, that would be very, very helpful, and I appreciate the fact that many of the partners and the people that you engage are very successful and all of that, but it kind of is harder for me to focus on, you know, what you're bringing to Adams County.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else? All right. So I did have one, I guess it's more of a comment than anything else, I was just checking, uh, the different contributions, and, uh, I'm just, I'm interested in maybe a little more detail on the fundraising, because it appears that, I mean, for individual donors, I mean, it's an amazing amount of, uh, fundraising that they did for the amount, you know, and the amount that they are showing, so it was just kind of, I'd like a little more details on that, it, it was just kind of amazing to me, it stood out. Anyone else? Alrighty. Next on our agenda is Colorado Youth Bands. And with that, I believe they are asking for one project, and, um, I will open it up for discussion.
Uh, I would like, uh, some clarity on the number of shows and clinics, et cetera, that this organization plans to put on. The project lasts the entirety of next year. And they have a number of shows, clinics, uh, uh, plus the instrument petting zoos, which is, I think, a wonderful idea, um. But, uh, they talk about, for example, the music clinics at Sunset Ridge, um, attended by twenty-four events are gonna, oh, eight events attended by seventy-four, I take it, that's, yeah, that's what they say, so. So those audience numbers, well, I guess it's up to us to add them up then, um. Okay.
Forty-four, if I added correctly, Larry.
What's that?
The numbers, if you add up the anticipated attendees, you should come up with three hundred and forty-four, either my calculators are.
Thanks, Jim, but again, to go along with what several of the council people have mentioned, um, it would be really nice if they would have more uh, clarity to their information, you know, like, they can total that up, we have a lot of grants to read, and sometimes we don't have the time to, uh, do math, you know, for them to come up with what we're looking for, for the results that we're looking for. Um, so I, I agree with you, Larry, because I actually read that several times and, and then just didn't, I, I didn't add them up, you know, I just kind of got a little frustrated with how they presented the, the detail for the attendance.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it, it wasn't that, you know, it wasn't that bad, but like you said, it's, you know, we've got so many of these things to read that it, you know, i- i- it might be helpful, but, you know, that's a, that's, that's, that's not a major thing, I suppose, but it's, it's, it's a key thing, um. The, the, the organization seems to have a wonderful, uh, project, uh, here in Adams County, like I said, I, you know, I hadn't considered the, uh, idea of an instrument petting zoo, which is nothing, which is nothing more than interactive instruction, so you give the kid the instrument, you, you let him play around with it, you let him play it, I guess. And, uh, um, and then they give it back, it's better than renting, uh, but, um, it seems, it seems like a very interesting, uh, uh, project, and, um, yeah, I liked them overall.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anyone else?
Just me, I, I thought that it, it's not, um, a very large ask, and I thought that, um, i- i- it does seem like a wonderful project, particularly in an area which isn't, um, you know, high income or anything like that, who doesn't get a lot of hands-on chances with this sort of thing, so, you know, I thought it was very reasonable for the amount of money they were asking for.
Uh, I'll go, thank you, Susan, I agree with your comments fully, um, but more, you know, taking a step back and looking at the organization as a whole, and the grant as a whole, you know, seventy-two-year-old organization, so gotta congratulate them on their longevity, um, but I think it was you, Larry, this is, to some degree, a little bit of a niche, right, and to read their whole application, see the diversity in programming that they're offering, their attempts at really trying to um, appeal to and provide accessibility towards, um, lots of differing kinds of, of students and attendees to their events, um, being thoughtful about their EDI practices at whatever level that they can do that, I, you know, I just, I so appreciated that. Um, and I, I thought I would also compliment them on the fact that they, um, they oftentimes contract local musicians that are alums of their program, to then come and sit in, offer teaching, um, do side-by-side work with students, so it just comes full circle, and I really appreciated the chance to read their application.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just to double down a little bit, um, I actually thought this was worthy of two, two applications, two projects. Um, just to remind folks, we do offer two, two pro, up to two projects, um, and it's because it felt like education and a concert, and I know they are, I, I'm assuming they're linked in the idea of the kids, you know, sort of rehearse and then they perform, but, um, I don't know, I just feel like this, this could be worthy of two separate projects, where there are, I know there are costs associated with, with holding a concert, and there are costs associated with education. And to Susan and Emily's point, if costs money to provide high-quality training, um, so I, I know we don't want to tip them over so that they're so reliant on SCFD, but, um, yeah, maybe take a look at if this, if your projects are, are worth, are, are two projects instead of one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on the agenda to Colorado Celebration of African-American Arts and Culture. And I will, I believe it, let's see, do we have, it's two projects that they're asking for funding for, so with that, I will open up the discussion.
This is another highly specialized content, uh, organization. And they have, uh, not only are they highly specialized, you know, maybe not so much as the Bach Ensemble, uh, but, um, they're also, they're also pretty stationary, so, uh, I considered that when I, uh, when I graded them on their impact to Adams County, and on their, um, on their EDIA practices, and, um, both of those, uh, both of those, uh, issues are very difficult uh, for, for an organization like this, but, um, I liked what they said in their, uh, in their initial EDIA, uh, statement. And that is, uh, let me just see if I can dig it out here, because it really hit me, um. They emphasized how, uh, this organization and their content are for all people, and I think they capitalized it, all people, um, especially in the light of, uh, our current situation, our current political climate, I guess you could say, uh, I thought that was key in, uh, in mentioning that, and, um, I, uh, I look forward to visiting again this, uh, this, this summer, because, uh, it was, uh, it was quite a, it was quite a uh, event last year, and, um, I think that, that they're continuing to do great things, and, um, I, uh, I like them very much.
Thank you, anyone else?
Well, if I
Go for it, Jim.
Are correct. I, I very much appreciate the fact that they told me ten percent of their vendors are from Adams County, six percent of their volunteers are from Adams County, they get a board member from Adams County. I mean, for, uh, an organization which puts on and is asking for funding for an event in Denver City Park, they made it very clear that, uh, they have very good outreach to Adams County, and I, kudos to that.
And, can, oh, go for it, Susan.
Sort of peripheral to that point, um, I look, the activity sheet from last year said zero Adams County participants, but the text says that there were nineteen hundred and sixty-five at the festival from Adams County, so I assume that that was just a miss. Um, but the other question I have is that in project one, there were, um, nineteen, you know, thousand dollars for mileage, I, I, I'm just checking to make sure I got that right. I, I, I'm just checking to make sure I got that right, and I, I think it is, it says mileage expenses for nineteen thousand dollars, so that might be something to have some clarity on. Um, is what, you know, why that would be as high as that? Travel and mileage nineteen thousand dollars. I guess maybe they bring people to perform from other places and pay their airfare or something, but that's a lot.
Correct, yeah.
Hand raised, probably to address that question.
Um, Susan, real quick, um, and this is for the entire councils, I want to make sure that you all understand. Did you say that zero percent um, of their attendance was in Adams County? Or is it based on the activities and attendance sheet, what it?
On the activities and attendance sheet, it was a lot of zeros for Adams County. But then in the text, they say that they had one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five people attend the festival, so they didn't put in the activities.
I, I can explain that. So SCFD asks for different sets of information based on whether it's the final grant report or the grant application. On the grant application, it asks where the activity happened and how many people attended at that, that location. On the final grant report, we ask where people reside and that is reported on the final grant report. I'm more than happy um, to share that information, maybe offline. Um, I can send you the breakout from their final grant report, but it's, it's not based on, does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, they said it in the text. I was just confused about why it wasn't.
Yeah, it's, it's two, two different sets of information, so it's based on where the activity happens and not where people reside on the grant application.
Okay, got it.
And then the travel and mileage, that is for um, national acts that are coming into the, to the event.
Yeah, like that's what I kind of figured. It's, it's a lot though. Um, and I just had my other question, then I will stop talking. Is, um, in Project Two, they, they talked a lot about the mural and I'm just kind of wondering if there was anything other activities in addition to the mural. That's my comment.
Erin was.
Yeah, um, I, I, I hear Jim, uh, on, on your comment, I'm gonna push back gently and respectfully a little bit about the attendance. Um, it, it's, it, uh, hmm, they're asking for over eight percent of their budget. And I don't, I, I'm not seeing the total number. I see the nineteen hundred now, um, nineteen sixty-five from Adams County. How many people actually attend this? What percentage of attendees were coming from Adams County? I just love a little clarity on that because it seems like a giant festival in Denver. Um, for Denver. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing their sort of dedication to Adams County in Project One. Um, I think it's an amazing festival and I think it's really, really great. Um, I just personally have a hard time justifying these really large festivals in other places unless they're really actively showing me the percentage, you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm not seeing the, the trade-off. That is me personally. Um, for, especially when we're in a deficit climate and we have a lot of things to fund. That being said, Project Two is in Adams County. Um, and Susan, I just, um, I, I happen to run a mural festival. So the way that I read this is that this particular mural is a community engagement activity. So that's the way I read this is that as opposed to most murals, where you hire an artist, it's almost like a public art selection and that artist paints it. This is painted by community members and led by the artist, not necessarily painted by the artist. So, um, to me, that, that felt like a really cool engagement. Um, and the fact that they can, and that there are some, you know, African drumming performances and cuisine and all sorts of stuff around this making of art. Um, I thought that was a really great community activation in and of itself, but that's just me.
And just to go along with Project Two, uh, in my note, I was, I like the idea, you know, what they did over and are going to be doing over at Stanley. Um, in that it will remain over there, uh, you know, but I'm just kind of wondering where it's going to be, you know, and how large it's going to be and that type of thing, so. But I think it's a cool project.
Larry has his hands up and I just want to just address this and Emily, I, I'm, I'm wondering if you're gonna bring up what I'm bringing up, but the, the visual art versus project question. Um, and just that according to the guidelines, you know, and to Erin's point, that this is a very community-engaged public art project, um, but it's also happening within the year. So the visual art projects are for permanent artworks that take a much longer time to install, so if something can happen within the year, then it can qualify as a project. And then Larry, did you have a question?
Just briefly, uh, I noticed that in the, uh, in the revenue request for Project One, Other is eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, I, I just think that bears a lot more breaking down and parsing out and explanation.
Thanks Larry. Anyone else?
They, they do break it down. Um, about the Other is from non, is made up of nonprofit partners. So, which looks like the other SCFD counties. So saying Broome, Broomfield is six thousand, Adams County is twenty-five thousand, Araposa is forty thousand, Denver is forty-one thousand. So they're sort of lumping that all into Other.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Just a quick question, so, uh, I just would like to confirm that the Stanley Marketplace is actually in Adams County. I know it's in Aurora, but.
Yes, it is in Adams County.
Okay.
Anyone else?
We count too Larry, way down south.
Proud of that one.
I, I, I see, I, as I see it out of my window, I'm like, it counts.
All right. Anyone else? Good conversation. Okay, we are more than halfway through our organizations. Does anyone want to take a brief break or shall we just go forward? Just keep on going.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, keep, keep rolling if everybody's happy.
Okay, I'm happy. Okay, next is Saint Martin's Chamber Choir. So with that, I believe they're asking funding for one project. That I'll open up the discussion.
I have to just jump in and say, this is a great example of a mission statement. Very clear, it sets it all up, then they can jump into the narrative, so, um, thank you. Thank you very much for that clarity.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, I wanted to compliment them on their diverse contributors list. I mean, they've got I Individual Giving and that's, that's impressive. Um, these organizations that have found, found a way to activate individual donors is pretty incredible because that says to me that they've got a whole bunch of people coming to see their concerts. Um, which is, which is pretty neat. Um, it, it, for the project, it, 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 did it feel like two projects? I'm feeling like Joyce here, I'm sorry Joyce, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, it did to me too.
I'm picking up your, you have the flag, I'm picking up your flag here, um, I'm sorry.
It's okay, but I, I agree with you, yeah.
There's also the online participation portion of it, and again, we, we don't fund online project, projects that are online, as far as I understand, um. And one of the locations is in Broomfield, so is that? Okay, I'm seeing nods from the councils, so, um, just, just some things, it, it felt, it, again, I, I li- I like their seniors outreach, I think. Um, you know, I thought their, their EDIA, uh, with the work they've done as an organization and explaining that was fantastic. Um, I just, I just have some questions based on their, their project application.
Anyone else?
Larry has his hand up.
Okay Larry, I didn't see you, okay.
That's okay, thanks. Um, the, uh, the Mountain View Elementary School. Um, and, and, and this issue comes up, uh, further down the, uh, further down the list too. Okay, have have the former Adams Twelve, Adams County, whatever, whatever Adams County uh, schools, have they been changed to Broomfield Schools since they were Adams County in Broomfield before Broomfield became a county? So what happens now? Uh, is that, is that, should that be a Broomfield School? And should this group go to Broomfield for, uh, uh, for funding for, for this part of their program? How, how is, how are we looking at this now?
It's a school, I, we've discussed this a few times now and I think that their, Adams Twelve does have schools in Broomfield. That means it's in Broomfield County, even though it's called Adams Twelve, so it is a Broomfield School. So we, we've discussed potentially clarifying the guidelines because the council does allow for organizations to serve the county in multiple ways, for example, outside of the county, bringing Adams County residents, so even if this school serves Adams County students, it still does not count. The council has made the decision to only fund if they're going into schools in Adams County schools. That being said, it is what it is and we can't go back to them, so I will let maybe Dana or Joyce, uh, speak to what to do now.
So Dana, do you want to take that?
I mean, uh, honestly, it's up to the council. I mean, I'm just here to make sure that we're following statu- statutory um, issues, uh, so it's up to the county, uh, or sorry, of the council whether you want to fund that aspect. I mean, it's only, to me, it's only one out of what, six or so schools? Um, and to Zoe's point, um, and not really knowing that, that part of the county, um, that school may serve, um, community members that actually live in Adams but go to the Broomfield School just because of the proximity to the Adams slash Broomfield border, so, um.
Would say consistency would be the key here, just because there have been a number of organizations that have listed schools outside of Adams County, whether they realize it or not, you know, so just making sure that you're being consistent so that you're not punishing one or, you know, you know, having one organization score differently because of the same thing. Erin, yes?
I will also say they did not apply for Broomfield. So this might just be an oversight, um, so assuming best intent. But, um, if they're listening, a reminder, you can apply to Broomfield for Broomfield Schools.
Yeah. Susan, did you, were you about to say something there? Oh, and Emily also has her hand up.
Okay. Um, you know, just a general comment to pile on on this topic. They are second to Denver, their home. Am I right? Their, their home county. Adams is, is getting the most outreach, um, second to their home county, so maybe that helps frame how we're, your, you are, council members are choosing to score that. Good point. Uh, Susan, did you have something?
No, she shook her head.
Oh, okay, all right. Um.
Joyce, let me, let me.
Hold on. Go ahead Jim.
I, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but here again, Adams County School District, school districts are their own entity. And school districts can and do cross-county lines. The, the problem I think is it's identified as Adams County School District and people make the assumption that the school is in Adams County. That's an assumption that people should not be making. Uh, and I would say that people who are filling this out have an obligation to find out where the county line is. Um, and make sure that the school is actually in Adams County, knowing full well that school districts can cross county lines. Uh, it, it's just a matter of, um, dotting your i's and crossing your t's.
Thanks Jim. Anyone else? All right, and Zoe, did we have that on the agenda for the retreat, just as a general conversation about school districts?
We'll make sure it's on there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so with that, we will move to Kim Robard's Dance. And they are requesting funding for two projects, so with that, I will open up the discussion.
Well, I, um, I'm always impressed with the, um, collaborative nature of Kim Robard's Dance. I think they, you know, go the extra mile to try to keep things fresh and creative and do different things every year and stuff like that. So it was nice for me to read the projects in that way.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm digging through my, my notes here, um.
Yeah.
I, I had a lot about Project One. A lot, a lot written, um. Love, love that they're working with the Fiesta Colorado dancers, I think that's great, but they have a, um, assuming a renter for their facility or they're partnering with somebody for their, uh, dance facility, I think that's great. Um, the, the, the budget, the budget, well, it's, it's ironic because the, one of the earlier groups I was saying, boy, this doesn't feel like, this, it feels like this could be more. With Kim Robards, um, last year, I remember we had a very long conversation, um. The, the budget seems really high for, for Project One, um. You know, uh, yeah, anyway, for, they're, they're gonna provide, they're, they're going into a school where the school's gonna provide tech staff and promotions and yet there's twenty-five hundred bucks asked for, for, for PR, there's five K again in rental, in rental costs, but they rehearse in their own facility, are they renting the school? I'd love some information on that. They're asking for money for mileage. Um, so I'm just, and it also feels like two, two projects because it's not like the workshop students are then performing. Kim Robards is performing, there's a professional performance at this school. So, so that to me is not the same project um, because they're creating a ticketed event at that location, as opposed to in my mind, what would be, you know, an educational opportunity followed by performance for those kiddos or with those kiddos. This feels like two very separate things in my mind in Project One. Um, the, the, yeah, I mean, dancers, rehearsal, performance, teaching fees, forty-four thousand, choreographer fees, ten thousand, and yet they're going to be doing this performance other places as well. So again, where, where is the line of what they're asking us to, I'm not seeing the direct impact on Adams County based on the amount of money they're asking for. Um, that's just, that's just my take on it. Um, I do appreciate them breaking down the numbers, um, I, I do appreciate that, but it's, um, it, it, it sort of feels like Adams County is paying for the entirety of a project that that's gonna then go on to other places. Um, and, yeah, so there's that. Um, they don't, I, I, I'm having trouble understand, seeing the actual anticipated attendees.
Yeah.
Um, uh, they just, they, they sort of talk a uh, they just, they, they sort of talk around it, and I, and I'm not, and I'm not seeing it. Um, yeah, and I was looking at Inside the Orchestra's budget for, for this same program. This, this is the exact same thing we ran into last year with this organization where their sort of budget was very different, even though they were collaborating and other groups were asking for funding for the same project, which is totally fine. Obviously, there are different costs for different organizations, but, um, and, and I looked back at the ITO, the Inside the Orchestra application, and they don't list this second venue on their application. So there's some discrepancies here. I would love a little clarification on, um, and, and the budgets seem a little out of line to me based on what they're asking us to put in.
Aaron, you brought up all the questions I had, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I get this. What anticipated attendees, students grades nine to twelve, but how many of those students, nine to twelve, are going to be participating in this program? And it seems to me you, you ought to be able to identify a ballpark figure of how many students, teachers and parents, here again. Um, they're telling me who they are, but they're not giving me the number that justifies, um, serving Adams County, if you will, and having an impact on the county.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move to the next organization, which is Boulder Symphony. And they are requesting funding for one project. With that, I'll open up the discussion. Hey, I don't see any hands. Let me, um, start the conversation then. I really like having an organization bring, you know, uh, any event into Adams County. I really love the idea that they designed their program to perform over at, uh, the Wyemeyer Dome. But I have to tell you, I'm a little, I'm struggling with how it's going to benefit Adams County. And maybe it's just the way it was written, but it was, to me, pretty generic as far as benefiting the businesses and some of the, the things in, you know, the, the area, which, um, I don't believe we have any of those things right over there at the Wyemeyer Dome. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with that. I, I, I definitely like the idea and I love the proposal, but, um, not sure how it really benefits Adams.
I challenge you to fisticuffs, Joyce. I challenge you ironically to fisticuffs. Um, I think, I think this is a huge benefit, um, having programming like this in Wyemeyer Dome. I grew up in a super rural town, um, and, uh, I was fortunate enough to have groups like this come through and, um, as a, as a little farm kid, I think, uh, it, it changed my life, um, having this sort of stuff in rural communities. So my hope is that they're, um, again, I'm waving Jim's flag, that they advertise, that they advertise really heavily that they, they, they allocate a lot of their budget, because this is probably new programming for a lot of folks in that area. And it's gonna take a bit, it's gonna take a bit to get folks in and enticed who aren't used to this kind of programming. But I, I say yay, 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 more ballet.
Well, you know,
in the, in the fields of Adams County.
Yeah, I mean, I loved it. I mean, you know, but it was just the, I guess it was just the way it was written that kind of pushed me back a little bit, you know, because I liked the idea. Um, but, but again, I think it was just the way it popped out at me, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, I thought it was a really neat project. I will also say I, I, my heart goes out to them, um, when they were explaining their deficit. Um, oh, boy.
Yeah.
To have donors, donor, a, a large donor like that drop just makes my heart sink. Um, I will say, though, there was a thirty-four thousand dollar difference between their contributors list and their financial overview. Um, and they still had a twenty-three thousand dollar deficit. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm always curious why some groups it matches and other groups it's tens of thousands of dollars different. Um, so just, again, not, there's anything wrong with it, but it does make me ask a question.
Right. Okay.
I had it. Yeah, I, I didn't react necessarily to the contents, because I, I do think it's okay to bring that kind of content. But I did, um, they do think they're gonna have a thousand attendees for two, you know, over two concerts. And I thought, well, that seems like a lot, because nobody probably is very familiar with them in this area. That's just my.
I'll, I'll jump in. I'm, I'm in Aaron's camp here for this. I think it's such a wonderful thing to expose. I think what would have benefited their project description would be just what we're talking about. How are they marketing this? That, you know, they're doing a big collaboration. So how are they working with their partner to bring, you know, to, to bring this to life and, and make sure that they get that thousand attendees, um, out, out to the, to the dome? Um, and I have to congratulate them for expanding their reach. This will be their first time that they come to Adams, and they're coming to the place that we want them to come. I mean, just in general, right? The, the dome and the campus is exactly what the Zoe and her team have been working towards. So this is exactly what we're looking for. Um, and I'm, I'm very excited about it. I think being a classical musician myself, you know, a Philip Glass piece, yeah, that's, it's a challenging project to bring forth, and I, I, I will be first to purchase a ticket. I'm, I'm very excited about this. So congratulations. Yeah. Anyone else?
Sorry, one, one more quick little thing. Unless Emily, do you still have something to say? I apologize. Okay. Your hand was up and I didn't want to cut you off. Uh, that was hilarious. You did, you grabbed at your icon at the same time it went away. That was amazing. Um, just going back to mission statement, um, uh, it sets up, it sets up the whole, the whole application for me, um, puts everything in context. And I honestly don't know what their mission is. Uh, yeah, so I would strongly encourage them next year. Unfortunately, that is, that is a, a, that is one of the five categories for us. And, um, I would strongly encourage anybody writing an application to use the mission statement box for their mission statement and keep the narrative to the narrative.
Yeah.
Oh, Dana's got something to say. She's gonna, she's gonna slap me down.
Actually, I'm not scolding y'all. Uh, I just wanted to say, Emily, I was looking at their grant from last year because you said this was like the first time, and it looks like they're actually gonna have a concert next month over in Wyemeyer.
Well, thank you. I love it.
It was from the grant they did last year, so, um, it's coming, so you get a chance to see them.
Fantastic. Thanks, Dana. Anyone else?
Dana, I apologize for assuming bad intentions. If you raise it, I thought you were gonna scold me.
All right. Next on the agenda is Cantori, and they are requesting, I think, just one project. Um, so with that, I'll open up the discussion. I'm so excited about this. I loved reading this application. Um, Cantori is obviously well-known in the metro area and far beyond that, but really enjoyed reading the whole application, learning about all of, all of their collaborations and the work that they're doing to really try to expand their reach. Um, the, the knowledge of classical music in their community and beyond is, is very exciting. Um, I think the, the collaboration, um, for Project One, I, and maybe Dana, maybe you'll tell me that I need to recuse myself. I happen to know the guitarist that they're bringing in, um, from my time in Boston, and I'm so excited to, um, to, to, I, I didn't know that the project was coming, so I'm so excited about that. Um, and, you know, again, I feel like I'm, I'm gushing a little bit, but I really enjoyed the whole thing from start to finish. I thought the application was really strong and well put together. Um, and I think it is meaningful for our county. All right. Um, so Dana, um, just due to the fact that, um, Emily knows someone in the, in the group.
That's not a, that's not a direct conflict. I mean, if Emily thinks that she's biased in any way, then she needs to recuse herself. But if she's just, if she just knows someone and, and likes the grant, the grant is well-written, um, you're more than welcome to, to review and score.
Thanks, Dana. Okay. All right. Anyone else? So I'll just, in, while everyone's thinking, I'll just ditto what Emily said, you know, other than I don't know anyone in the organization, but I, I just think this, um, grant was well put together. I really like the group and what they do. Um, you know, so, yeah, I really enjoyed it. Anyone else?
Did I, did I read correctly? They had a forty-six thousand dollar surplus last year? Did I read that correctly?
I don't, didn't highlight that. Um,
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's showing last month.
They have a forty-six thousand dollar surplus according to what they put on their grant application. Is that what you're asking, Aaron?
Correct, yeah. So I think, you know, learning a little bit about, I, I, I couldn't find an explanation of what my guess is, is it, it was a grant that was, you know, is supposed to be spent down, and, you know, that happens sometimes because they're, they're, they're calling for a zeroed-out budget in their upcoming fiscal year. Um, but I'd love a little bit of information on, because, boy, if you can get a almost fifty thousand dollar surplus, well done. Every year, I am seeing that they, they have been in the, in the black the last five years, which is impressive, very impressive, so. Um, but I'd love a little bit of clarity on that.
Yeah, you know, what I, what I picked up on is their ticket sales was up over almost thirty percent, up at twenty-nine point five, and there, and individual donors, which is amazing to me, is over two hundred and seventeen percent up. So that might account for some of their surplus. I mean, you know, they evidently had a very good year, you know, so.
It's also that, um, I was looking at their financial review, and it looks like forty percent, they're requesting forty-six percent of funding from SCFD in the upcoming year.
Which is high, correct, Dana? I mean, that's, yeah. The, I think thirty, we're looking for somewhere around thirty percent? Okay.
Yeah, best practice is thirty or less.
Right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I don't see any other hands. So we will move to Centro Cultural Mexi-Mexicano. So, which is Mexican Cultural Center. So with that, they're asking funding for two projects. And with that, I will go ahead and open up the discussion.
This is another school issue. Um, for, uh, for project number two, they list, um, they list two high schools, I believe. Um, nope, sorry, project number one. Project number one seems to be a, a concert and open rehearsal, whatever, a musical event at Betcher Concert Hall. Uh, for that, they're inviting students from Adams City High School and from Legacy High School. Legacy High School is in Broomfield. So like, like Aaron says, Broomfield is a county duly part of this district and, uh, applicants can, can go to them as well as to us. Uh, Broomfield is its own separate county now. So I think that the application for that part should have gone there.
Okay.
Joyce, let me say they did, because if you look at Broomfield County, it lists Legacy High School as a Broomfield County location. And this list, Legacy High School is in Adams County location.
I just looked, it's in Broomfield, but it's Adams 12.
It's in the school district, but the high school is in Broomfield County. And in the Broomfield application, it is listed as a Broomfield County location. It's listed in Adams County's application as an Adams County location, one of the venues, and then Broomfield, the Broomfield application, it's listed as a Broomfield County location. It, it's listed both ways. Now, um, that makes it more challenging for me to accept the fact that this is just somebody who's fuzzy on school district boundaries.
Or, you know, when I looked at the, the grant and also other grants, sometimes I'm wondering if the organization, when they list the different schools in the different counties, if it's more for informational, information for us, not that they're asking for funding for that particular school, but just for information where they're listing, where they're going. So I, I, I get a little confused about that also.
Yeah, I would counter that, Joyce, a little bit. It, it does feel like because the, they are listing it as a vent, you know, the venue names.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and there aren't any Adams County venues, right, um, in, in Project One?
Right.
Um, I'm seeing.
Well, there's one, is there?
Yeah, Adams City High School.
Yeah, there's one.
Right, right, right. So in terms of their impact on Adams County, it, it does make me rate it fairly low. And in terms of operations and strategy, it makes me question. I don't know how other people feel.
It seems to me like they're, like they're trying to get two bites at the cherry by, by listing Legacy High School in both counties, but it's only in one, so.
Well, my guess is that's just a mistake, but, um, I, I'm, um, wondering why only fifty students can go to Betcher Concert Hall? Because, you know, they, they could take a lot more kids if they're gonna go to the trouble of doing it. So, uh, they do say they're gonna distribute four hundred tickets, but, I don't know.
Agreed, and it's for an open, it's for an open rehearsal, which is great. It's a great idea, but it's not for the, for the concert and all that, so, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no hands, we'll move on.
Sorry, sorry, just really quickly.
It's okay.
Pro, Project Two? I think, I, I, I really, I, I really got Project Two. Um, I think it's a great use of Anything Library, and I love all these, these collabs with Anything Libraries. I think it's fantastic, and, um, it just seems like a really great uh, cultural celebration and something wonderful for that community, so, um, Roses and Thorns, I went up on them on project two. I I really, I really enjoyed that. I I really enjoyed that project, and I hope it goes well for them.
I'd like to echo that too. Um, uh, I I don't want to get too caught up in the negative. Uh, so, yes, project two was uh, absolutely wonderful. So, yes, there's that.
Yeah. You know, and I enjoyed project two also, and you know, they're scheduling these events around the regular library hours, so folks can actually get there and then enjoy them. So I thought that was good. All right, any other comments? Larry, on my screen, you're just jumping up and down all over the place.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know why. It's just, and that's, it's just that view. I don't know what it is.
I'll try to sit still.
No, it's not you. It's, you know, the 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 view. It's my computer, you know. All right, with that, um, feel of the beat. And they are requesting funding for two projects. So with that, I'll open up the discussion.
Um, oh, I'll I'll jump in here. I'm not familiar with this organization, and I was kind of blown away. I mean, talk about a niche organization. What a cool thing. So, um, yeah, that that was very interesting to me to read about what they do and how they do it and why they do it and and all of that.
Yeah. I I think they've actually applied for several years now, but it's, I I just love this organization and what they do and how they do it. Um, you know, I just think they, it it's something that no other organization does, you know, which uh, kudos for them. Yeah. Anyone else?
It is, it is interesting to see their spike in SCFD reliance. And again, assuming best intent, uh, you know, I wonder if that has to do with I wonder if that has to do with just the state of um, science funding right now. Um, I know there's a lot of cuts being made to a lot of budgets, especially grant budgets and federal budgets. But it would have been nice to get a little um, understanding of of why they're jumping from thirteen percent to what did it say? Fifty fifty eight percent or fifty, yeah. It's uh, it's, it's um, ner- it makes me a little nervous. That being said, it's an incredible organization. I mean, and what they're doing for these, for these folks and the way they're able to, the way they patented their program, and now they're taking it on the road and normally, I'm not a fan of wash, rinse, repeat project grants, but but they're the same project. They're just in two different locations, and I applaud them for for doing that, you know. Um, we brought, I brought that up about another organization earlier. Um, it it is two locations, it's two separate projects, right? The grant for two separate projects. I think that's great. Um, yeah, it's it's a very, very cool thing that they're doing.
Any other comments? I don't see any hands. All right, we will move to Denver Children's Choir. And they are requesting funding for one project.
I'll say it.
Okay.
They, or their project, have listed fourteen rehearsal spaces uh, that they chose for an Adams County project. There is one actually located in Adams County. It just, it just made me feel that the impact on Adams County is negligible.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll jump on that. I I I wrote thirty thirty seven and a half thousand for one school. It's one third of what they're asking for in Denver. Uh, I mean, we're seven point one four percent of their programming. Yeah, so I I it's really cool group, and as somebody who was part of a youth choir in rural Ohio, growing up at the YMCA, I think this is very cool. Um, and the fact that they're adding non-binary and and uh, gen- other gender listings that are on like the registration, I I personally applaud them for that. Serving families with ADA needs, I'm just not seeing the impact on Adams County. I I echo Larry on that.
Right. But looking at the roses part of this, Erin, um, just, I'm just really happy that now they are starting to um, collaborate and have some conversation with some of the, like, Maybulton Public Schools and and other schools in Adams County. So hopefully that that can actually come to fruition. And uh, we'll see more activities and more things, you know, rehearsals and events from this organization in Adams County. So, yeah. Glad to hear that they're looking for other venues.
Yeah, they they do acknowledge that they're trying to grow their participants from Adams County. I mean, they have what, five hundred people, hopefully that they're impacting whatever. So, um, but it is a lot of money for for that. I would agree.
Right.
Big ask.
And Erin, did you raise your hand? Or no? Okay.
I scratched my head.
I just happened to see it at that time. Anyone else? No. All right. Well, that was our last organization uh, for for this session. Um, and then we don't have a nutty, another study session until May eighth. Is that correct, Zoe?
Correct.
All right. Any other comments before we adjourn?
Joyce, I'd love to say one.
Oh, I'm sorry, go.
Oh, no, I just wanted to um, congratulate Mexican Cultural Center. We have a um, we have a Adams County rep who who's with that organization, and they just won a um, an honor from the uh, from CBCA, the Colorado Business Committee for the Arts, as did the People's Building. Um, but it was great to, it was great.
We could congratulate Mr. Aaron Vega for doing a wonderful video and accepting his award on the stage as well.
But there were two, yeah, two Adams County Cultural Arts Commissioners who were able to accept awards on behalf of their organizations, and I thought that was very cool. So go us.
Yes, congratulations, both of you. Yes. It's very, very exciting. Any other comments? Did I hear another voice before I?
I was just thinking about how many uh, how many uh, applications I can read over the next two weeks.
I know. And just to confirm, there will be that change. We're going to add control group productions to the top of the May fifteenth study session. So that'll be the first one we discuss that night.
So will there be seventeen that night?
Sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Let's see here.
Yeah, there's currently fifteen.
Sixteen, here it is. I have two, the it's no biggie, but that on my little sheet that you sent out, I've got two May eights. And I think the May fifteenth is the so, so that will be.
What you're looking at?
I think you have the old version.
Yeah, you might have the old version. Yeah.
I could, I, yeah, I never threw.
I see that too. Yeah, I see that May eighth is twice, but I'm assuming this session six is May fifteenth.
Okay.
Well, it's hard to say. I don't know what you guys are looking at, but I'm looking at the agendas, so.
Yeah, all good. It just, yeah, so it's, so the number.
Being an admin, I've made it very clear that admin is not my skill, guys. Very, very clear. I'm good at other stuff.
Okay, so this is for the the fifteenth, we're gonna have the control group added to it?
Yeah, and it will be the first organization that we review that day.
Is is the eighth or the fifteen? Now I'm confused.
Fifteenth.
The fifteen.
Okay.
Fifteen is what I understand. So it'll be number one instead of family?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to send an updated one for me? Just because I'm writing all.
I'm gonna send it to everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
You're the best, Zoe. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much, everyone. It's been fun. I will see you in two weeks. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.